It's South Coast Tonight with Chris McCarthy and Marcus Farrow. They've got you covered on all the news of the day. From local issues to politics on both sides of the aisle. This is the place where the movers and shakers come to be heard, to listen, and where they're held accountable. This is South Coast Tonight on W B S M.
So Marcus, we've got a big hour right now. We're going to discuss what I think is a, I think you agree, a groundbreaking feud between city council member Shane Burgo, who was in his first term.
Yeah.
And longtime Mayor John Mitchell, who I think is in his 12th year?
Yeah, he was elected in what, 2011?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
Um, so John Mitchell, of course, is a, is a strong mayor as the charter shows, not just in personality, but also in statute. Um, you know, that's the law, strong mayor.
So Mayor Menino of Boston, longtime mayor of Boston, um, who, who let, who, who stepped down from office and then died shortly thereafter?
I think he, I mean, he knew.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, he, he was dying of cancer, that's why he stepped down.
I didn't know, actually.
Yeah.
I didn't know that. And I follow politics pretty, pretty closely.
Just when they get cancer, you usually write them off. Is that what it is, Marcus? You cruel bastard. Anyway.
I like people who didn't get cancer.
All right, Trump. Trump.
John McCain, that was his real problem with John McCain.
He got, yeah, sorry. You know, if you, if you ran a small clip of all Trump's most outrageous things, he wouldn't even be in the conversation anymore.
Haven't they done that? Haven't they tried to do that?
They've tried worse than that.
Yeah, yeah.
They just can't nail the man.
So moving us.
Move away from Trump and under Burgo. Another man who won't, won't, won't accept election results. We have referendums show up. He wants to redo the four-year term.
Okay, fair enough.
Wants to do the CPA funding again.
Well, well, so here's, here's where I'm.
Decided overwhelmingly.
Yeah, so here's where I'm at. I, I've said this before, uh, almost, I've said this repeatedly. Um, I think that the ballot questions, if you were to just propose the rent stabilization, rent control one.
Because you agree with it.
Yeah, by and large, um, if they were to just propose that single question.
Scratch a liberal, find a fascist, go ahead.
So, so if you were to just propose that single, I think it's an idea worth exploring. So if you were to just propose that single ballot question, I think it would have a lot more meaningful impact, and I think it would be.
That's true.
I think it would be supported, I think the, the, the idea of it would be supported by the, you know, the very palpable and seemingly intractable housing crisis. Sorry, the very visible and seemingly unstoppable.
I'm going to get you reverse the source.
The very palpable means you can feel it. Intractable means.
Tell us more, Mr. Professor.
Intractable means it only gets bigger. So, uh, the.
Tell us more, Mr. Professor.
So, so, so anyway, the backdrop of this, of this serious housing crisis that's afflicting New Bedford and everybody else in the country. But, um, but, uh, the problem is, is that, and, and, and I, I do, I do believe Shane made some good points about talking to his residents about housing issues and how it's affecting them, and I believe that because we hear it from people in the audience. It's something that's, I think, borne out in statistics at housing, that the, that we're in a housing crisis.
All you have to do is go on any apartment website.
Yeah.
And look, and you'll say, what are you getting?
And there's even, and there's even data here, and there's even data on an article that Kate Robinson wrote on W, uh, W B S M dot com that said, um, even in the North End area, which is the, the, uh, like the poorest area in the city, this, this one specific neighborhood in the North End, rents have raised 33%. So I think it's pretty clear that there is, there is.
It's time to seize private, private property.
Yeah, so anyway, so here's, here's where, here's where I'm at. That's all, that's all I think, um, you know, very good points to make for your arguments, and I think he did a good job of that. Where I got really disappointed.
Is his work ethic?
Where I got really disappointed was when he then, then when Tim asked him about the Community Preservation Act question, because I've said before that this rent control question is watered down by the two silly questions that are next to it. Um, when he, when Tim asked him about the CPA question, he then talked about how important the CPA was for housing and how he actually is, he actually wants, because there's earmarks, you know, there's certain percentages that have to be spent on, uh, historic preservation, housing and, uh, open spaces and recreation. And then there's another 50% of that pot that you can use on whatever you want. He wants that all to be used for housing. He talks about how important that money is for, uh, to be, to be directed into that housing, into that, uh, into that housing component of the CPA to fund, to get more units online, and the fact that CPA has funded a lot of units to get online. But then he says, but Linda Morad got some phone calls.
Right.
So what am I going to do?
Right.
You know, this is a really important pro, this is a really important, I've heard from all my residents, the housing is a problem. I'm proposing this because I've heard from all my residents, uh, I, this is a very.
Doesn't that undermine his credibility?
This is, this is a very important pro, this is a, this is a very important tool that we're going to use, this is the Community Preservation Act. I actually want more of it to be used for the thing that I'm advocating for. I don't want it to see it go. I haven't heard anybody tell me that they want to see it go, but I have to put the question on the ballot because Linda Morad got phone calls. So it's absolutely a dereliction of, of your.
As the mayor said, dereliction of duty.
It's, it's a dereliction of duty because, because it's, 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 it's totally based on the whimsy of one counselor, and you're just basically saying, well, I have to go along with it because she got phone calls. You don't have to do something because she's asking you to do it.
Marcus, we, we have the letter that he wrote to, to the public and, I, was it addressed to the mayor or to the public in general? Um, I, I, we have it at W B S M dot com. But here's the thing, one of the very interesting parts of that letter.
It was, I mean, it was made public.
Right, so it's, it's for everyone's consumption.
Yeah, yeah, he made it public.
So, and we're going to have the mayor on Wednesday, and, and Tim will have him on Wednesday morning, so you're really going to get a lot of the mayor this week. Um, so Shane Burgo sent a long letter. Marcus, when he was here with us the other week, he talked about the war, the, all the work he's done on housing. The one thing he left out of this letter is his claims that he negotiated with the mayor to get the funding from ARPA for housing. That was his claim. We have it on, on tape, we can play it. We're not going to play it now, we'll play it when the mayor comes in. Because he insists that he negotiated with the mayor to get more funding for Har, for, from Harper for housing. It's interesting because a negotiation is when one person disagrees with another, right?
Um, yeah, I guess, I suppose.
Well, you're not negotiating with someone who agrees with you.
Yeah.
Right?
Sure, I, I mean, I think we're, you know, we're, we're putting emphasis on words that I don't know if he said negotiate or he said advocate for.
Absolutely used the word negotiate, I listened to it before I came tonight.
Okay.
So Shane Burgo said, one of the things that took up all his time was the negotiations with the mayor on the ARPA funds for, and he wanted more for housing.
I haven't heard this recently, so he said negotiations with the mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
So I know, because when those conversations were going on, I was in regular conversations with then-city council president Ian Abreu. So I know who was in the room. So I find it interesting that Shane Burgo, although he insisted on it here on the radio, and we have it in recordings, neglected, neglected that very important detail in his letter, when he made a written recollection of, of his work on housing and why the rent control question is so important, and that he didn't like the tone and tenor of the mayor's response, because it called into question their work ethic, their commitment to the process, and lectured to them. But I, I found it interesting, Marcus, that Councilor Burgo failed to put in writing his negotiations with the mayor on the ARPA funding for housing. I would think that, that Councilor Burgo would want to take credit for his work. So when Tim was asking him about that today, which is again, recorded in a podcast, he again, didn't really detail what he did in those negotiations. In fact, pointed to a letter from the Native Faith Inter-council Group, if I have that correct, it's, it's not a group, it's another group, not a city group, it's a private group that negoti, that was asked for more housing funding, and God love him. But that's not Shane Burgo doing it. So I'm a little light on the details as to what he actually did, that he claimed took up all his time with the ARPA funding, negotiations with the mayor.
Well, I think, I think maybe part of it was that the ARPA, the, the, the meetings for the ARPA funding in and of itself, I think they probably had to have more than one committee on finance, there's probably more than one, uh, per month, like, meeting on the ARPA negoti, uh, the ARPA funding and all that other stuff. There's probably a lot of work that went into that.
The mayor doesn't go to city council meetings.
Because it's, because it's a, because it's a 60, it's an allocation of $65 million.
Totally understand. I followed it very closely. That's why I wonder where these negotiations took place. Not in the committee meeting, I mean, I think you're, I think you're, you're, you're very generous here. Where the city council and the mayor don't have committee meetings.
No.
If they did, there would be notes, I would have them, you would have them. I looked all through the notes of the meetings.
Yeah.
I can't find any.
I don't know. I, I guess we'll have to ask Mayor Mitchell and, uh, Councilor Burgo the next time we talk to them.
Would it surprise you if some people who I know were in the meeting say Councilor Burgo wasn't there?
I.
Well, it was very clear that he was there though, right?
I don't know, I haven't heard the.
You're very charitable, Marcus.
I haven't heard the interview in, in two, two, three weeks. I, I haven't heard the interview, so.
But you do remember him bringing up the ARPA funds.
He did bring that up.
So he brought it up?
Yeah, he did bring that up.
Now is one of the reasons he wasn't able to hold more housing committee meetings, because he was busy with the mayor and the ARPA discussions. That's specifically what he told us.
Yeah, I think, I think he phrased it in the way that the council was more, uh.
No, he said he was involved.
Sure.
Well, it's literally what he said. He was involved. But what, would that surprise you if he wasn't involved?
Um, I guess we'll see. Uh, I, I haven't, uh, we'll have to.
Well, no, if we saw, found out that he wasn't involved, that would surprise you, because that's much different recollection than one he made on the air with us.
Yeah, it would surprise me then.
So that would be what, if he wasn't actually involved in those conversations? If no other party can remember a meeting that he was in?
Would not be the truth.
Someone's not telling the truth.
So, but here's the thing, again, I think.
I just want to point out that that's where we're at, and I love it.
I, I think that, um, I think that, here's the thing, I, I don't.
People are getting real.
I, that's the thing, people are getting real.
Because people sleep outside.
Yeah.
Someone slept outside last night because of the work or lack thereof.
Yeah, I, I, you know, probably a little bit, the issues are probably a little bit bigger than, than that. Um, so, uh, whether or not someone was in a meeting, I think, you know, again, housing's a big issue, and then it's going to take some time. Yeah, it's, it is the only issue. So here's the thing, you know, with the, with respect to this ballot question, I, you know, I just want to go back to what.
Do you think the city council will override the mayor's veto?
On what?
On the, on the, on the, each one, let's go through each one. On the housing question, the rent control, whatever.
I think they will.
So I'm counting votes, but I'm not privy to all the conversations, obviously. I think that it's going to be very close. Because remember, they need a super majority to override. That's very important. So they had a super majority to pass it.
They did.
So Council Oliver was the only one who voted no. Ian Abreu was unable to make it because they had the meeting despite the fact that his, his grandmother had died.
Um, yeah, I, I.
So you have Ian Abreu.
I don't think they were obligated to wait for him.
No, 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 I'm just saying, he wasn't able to vote on the question, and he had a legitimate reason not to be there.
Sure.
It's not a, you know, what, you, I, I think it's important when, because people do have questionable attendance and meetings, things like that, it's important when someone has a legitimate reason, then we make sure it's on the record.
Sure.
So in that case, I mean, his grandmother is dead.
Sure, okay, so Ian wasn't there.
Reason not to make it.
Yeah.
So if the mayor is able to switch all those votes, they had a super majority going in, that's what we've come down to.
Yeah, they have a super, they had a super majority because it was nine to one, Ian said it would have been nine to two.
Right.
Now, on the CPA question, um, it was seven to three, that's not a super majority, or it might be, is it a super major, is it, here's the thing I'm not sure of, is it a super majority of the body or a super majority of the people who happened, who were there to vote?
Very interesting, I don't know, Marcus.
Yeah, I don't either. So that, but, but seven counselors isn't, isn't a super majority, uh, of the body. So if everybody's there, which they should be, um, then they'll.
Can you imagine?
Yeah, right, which they should be, but, um, then, then it'll be a seven to, um.
Ian doesn't have a second grandmother, does he?
It'll be.
If she does, she better.
You know, well, Ian is, Ian is committed to, Ian is committed to voting against all, uh.
508-996-0500.
Ian is committed to voting against all three, uh, ballot questions. And so, um, so the, the CPA question, I think that one's going to fail the veto override, because, uh, Ian's committed to not vote, Ian's committed to voting against it because he understands that it's an important issue for housing, he doesn't want to jeopardize it, and he, he, uh, I think, I think everybody's in pretty much agreement that, um, council president Morad is misrepresenting the CPA, and how many phone calls she's getting about its repeal, um, the, um, uh, the.
Four-year term.
Four-year term, uh, but, but no, going back to the CPA.
Sorry.
Uh, uh, councillor Giesta said she's voting against the CPA, uh, the veto override on the CPA, because there's a lot of work that goes into Ward Two. Um, councillor Marky said he's voting against this, the, uh, the CPA, councillor Marky voted against it before, he'll vote against it again, because he's, he's got a good head on his shoulders. Uh, Scott Lima, same thing. So they'll probably vote, uh, against the veto override on the CPA, because they understand it's a good program, they don't want to jeopardize it on the whimsy of one counselor. But, um, so right now, that, that looks like that, that majority's, that, that is not a veto-proof majority, so that is, I don't think, going to make it on the ballot. The four-year term, I think, will make it on the ballot.
So the, uh, the dynamics are different than voting for the ballot question. Now you're voting against the mayor.
Yeah.
So the politics are changed significantly.
What's interesting is while councillor Giesta voted to override, uh, while councillor Giesta voted, uh, for, to put the four-year term on the ballot, she said she's going to vote against the veto override.
The politics have shifted dramatically.
I agree.
We'll be right back. 508-996-0500, that's how you can join the program. So Marcus.
Um, so we were talking about the city councils feud with the mayor over these ballot questions. Again, I do think that the conversations on housing are important, they're worth having.
No doubt about it.
And I actually do, uh, think that this, this, the rent control, rent stabilization question has gotten people talking in a way that they weren't before.
There were no meetings before.
I, I think that's, well, you know, there's, there's, again, there was stuff that was happening for sure. I covered the first, I covered the home group, uh, I covered their very first meeting, I actually wrote the first piece of media on the home group. Um, and I think that's a really good organization, they've got the, uh, they've got the, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, I'm going to be at that meeting too in a, in a couple of weeks in, in, uh, April, so I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, seeing what they, what they have in store. But, um, I think going forward.
But they don't have the full impact of a legal body, legally elected body.
And I think what, and I think that, uh, and I think that what can happen now is you can just go forward and start, you know, and start working on this, trying to create a, a sound, a public sounding board for the rent control, rent stabilization, a public sounding board for some of the issues, like the, I, I actually thought the, the plan by, the, the motion proposed by councillor, uh, Abreu for the, uh, the nursing homes, um, to be repurposed into housing, the, the, those three barren nursing homes after then Attorney General Healy shut them down, right? And so I think repurposing them into housing, I think, is a great idea. So I think that, you know, working on, that's, that was referred to Burgos committee, so we're going to actually start seeing, um, those, uh, we're, we're going to start seeing some of that stuff happening in the, the, in the Committee on, uh, Affordable Housing and Homeless Affairs. So that's what you can do going forward now, is start to take this momentum that you're trying to build and, and put it into public conversation and get that going. I, I, I think, I think there's a real opportunity here. But again, if it's going to be bogged down by those two inane other questions, then you just look like you're not doing your job and asking people a bunch of stuff.
So the ballot, being in favor of the ballot questions, right, whatever they are, um, all three of the questions, or individual and none of the questions, was a different conversation. Now that the mayor has vetoed them, it's now, you're either with the mayor or against the mayor on each individual question.
Mm-hmm.
And I did think that councillor Burgo did a very good job in explaining, uh, his position.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Uh, but, but. We're going to go to the phones, by the way, if you want to call us, it's 508-996-0500. So the political dynamics have certainly changed.
Sure.
Before the question, it's kind of interesting, councillor Burgo, you know, he admitted to us, he didn't want to hear the mayor say no, so he didn't tell them. Uh, I think the same question, or same situation is what, with, with Linda Morad. She just sprung them on the mayor.
Yeah.
Sprung them on, maybe sprung them on her colleagues, because I can't find any conversations. I thought Jack's Blaine, when he was with Tim today, made a lot of really good points about the city council and the way they're operating, and, uh, I think people really, Jack's been observing the city council and the, the mayor for years, and he's got some really, and again, he's a city taxpayer, he's got some real insight into what's going on here, because of the longevity of his observations. So, um, the fact that they just sprung this on the mayor, you know, and of course, the mayor's going to be outraged. It's not really, as he pointed out in his letter, it's not really how the government works. The city council makes policy, no doubt about it, but the administration has to administer the policy changes. So we're going to be here now, let's go to the phones. Thanks a lot for calling, you're live on W B S M.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hey, my friend, how are you?
Yeah, my friend, how you doing?
Good, good.
I want to congratulate you guys both for last Friday's program with Mayor Lang on the program.
Thank you.
That was great.
Certainly, he gives a different view of this than our present mayor does.
Yes.
He sees no problem, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, with having these, um, non-binding, uh, you know, questions on there. Uh, like, like me, and again, he's got a lot more weight than me because he did the job, he feels that two years were enough, okay, for a mayor, and I, I feel that if, if you work hard and you have the power of incumbency, uh, there's no need for four years, okay? Uh, I, I think he expresses that probably better than I do. Uh, I think he also mentioned too, that when they did have the vote on that, uh, to change it, uh, the, the vote was kind of close, and I don't know what the vote was, but that's what he said, it was close.
I remember him saying that, I don't know if that's actually the proper recollection of it, I think that the four-year term passed it over 50% of the vote, but maybe around 56 to 40 something, I forget them.
Again, I don't know, I don't have access to that, I'll, I'll take Mayor Lang at his word.
Yeah.
The other thing I was very, uh, struck by was that your friend, and I think he's my friend too, although I don't know him, Mark Montigny.
Sure, he's everyone's friend.
You know, said to the mayor that he was, Mayor Lang, that he was a great mayor, okay? A great mayor. And, uh, I don't think, uh, Senator Montigny, and he wouldn't say, but I don't think he feels the same way about John Mitchell. And I, one of the reasons I would give is, uh, I was watching the other night, uh, on TV, and they were opening up a new store in the West End, and, uh, Mayor Mitchell was there, and Tony Cabral was there in the background, and I was surprised because he called Tony his friend, all right? And he gave him, you know, uh, do, you know, chance to speak and everything, and take also, uh, some sort of, um, you know, uh, accolades for having this person open the store. Now, Mark Montigny kept, single-handedly, I would say, UMass Docmoth and, uh, UMass New Bedford.
Sure.
And I would have thought, and maybe I didn't hear it, Chris, maybe you did, that Mayor Mitchell would have, uh, you know, said to Senator Montigny, uh, thanks, because that's one of the pieces that helped keep, uh, the, um, downtown together. I didn't hear anything, okay? Uh, so I don't think there's very good feelings between those two gentlemen.
Well, I will, I will say this.
You know more than I do.
I have a lot of personal conversations with Mark, and, um, you know, we're, we're very close friends, and, um, I would make no, no, no bones about that, but neither would he, but, um, I've had a lot of personal conversations, I will tell you, without, I don't think it's violating my confidence in him, with him, when, when I say that he always refers to John Mitchell as his friend, there's certainly tensions there, but I, I think, I think Mark really li, you know, has admiration for the mayor, but certainly have tension.
They have matching bracelets.
Well, Chris, if I were mayor, and I think if you were mayor, and Senator Montigny really worked as hard as he did to keep UMass Docmoth and New Bedford downtown, don't you think you'd hear something?
I would have.
I would, I would certainly, so, you know, credit him, you know, uh, that doesn't have to.
You have to, because that's the history, yeah.
It was handled about the state pier, from listening to Senator Montigny talk about it, hey, look, I want what he wants down there on the state pier, and maybe even though I don't deserve the legal right to hear about this in the negotiations, I wrote that legislation, that's basically what I thought I heard him say.
That's exactly what happened.
And again, if that's the case, you would think, hey, look, um, Senator Mark, I don't have to pick up the phone and call you, but I am going to let you know that this and this and this is being proposed, and thank you very much for your part in doing this. You don't get that out of my way or the highway, okay? You don't. And that's, that's part of the problem there, you know? Uh, again, I just want to go back to, uh, Mayor Lang.
Yeah.
I, I thought he explained a feeling that is closer to mine about where the city should go, even, he didn't talk about it this time, but the view of the, the port, and maybe the windmills not working and everything like that, uh, maybe Fusion taking over. Uh, today, technology is happening, happening so fast that even though, uh, you know, former Mayor Bullitt, or Mayor Bullitt, had mentioned that, hey, that's been forever, but, you know, the way things are going now, uh, like Roosevelt said, my left, my left hand know what my right hand's doing.
Right.
Maybe there should be a contingency plan down there that if windmills don't go through, maybe there should be some area there that we keep quiet about that Fusion might be able to go into. So, you know, we keep the power coming, you know?
So I, I think that there's a lot of problems with wind, um, potential problems, we're seeing them now with the, um, with the animals that are dying, the dolphins, the whales. Now, look, I, I'm not going to make any friends here, but by saying this, but I'm not a big believer in wind, but, but I know the wind blows, and I know that windmills do work, I know that, I don't know what the electricity's going to cost, but dolphins or whales are really fun, they're great to go on a wa, you know, and go on a whale watch in the eighth grade, that's fun. But the reality of it is that those animals cannot stand in the way of progress. And it would be, it's really sad if they're dying, and we're going to try to figure out a way not to have them die.
I think it could change drastically, and I'm not saying Mayor Bullitt is wrong, he's been after Fusion for years.
Right.
But the way technology is changing so rapidly, things, it's hard to keep up with it, that could happen, and you should have somebody in the bullpen that's able to say, okay, we can adapt to Fusion too if it comes in.
Sure.
I, I maybe you might want, want to say that to the windmill people, but like Franklin Roosevelt said in his politics, I never let my left hand know what my right man's, hands doing, that way he could play both sides and, and come out looking like a winner, and whether it's Mitchell or whoever they are. The other thing I will say is too, uh, the barbarians aren't at the gate, uh, with, with these, uh, um, what do you call it, uh, um, referendums.
No, they're not, no, 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 they're not at the gate, they're in the horse, they're inside the horse. No, I'm, I'm telling you, that's what, that's the CPA question, that's Council President Morad building momentum to try to kill it.
I agree with you, it's politics, I agree with you, okay?
But it's, it's bad politics.
This is a long way off yet, okay? So like Mayor Lang said, let, let the people, let them test the temperature of the people, it doesn't mean anything unless you have a binding referendum and you, you gotta have the, you know, the, uh, the state legislature.
But if you have somebody in a position of power, the second most powerful person in the city government, purposefully misleading people on a particular policy, and then putting it.
Or you're talking about Linda Morad.
And Linda Morad.
Oh, that's just a long, a long battle.
Purposefully, yeah, but, but that's not, that's, it's not, it's not something we can, we can just excuse away. You've got a policy that works really well, you've got a, you've got a, you've got a person who's the second leading, uh, the second most powerful person in the city government, putting something on the ballot despite the fact, saying that she got phone calls that nobody else in the council got. And then you've got, hold on one second, and then you've got, and then you've got that same person, you've got that same person saying, oh.
Sorry, I just dropped your call, I'm sorry. Listen, um, call, call back.
Can you call back? I just dropped the call.
We dropped it, um.
I did it. I, I dropped the call.
So.
That was my fault.
We're, we're working in.
I didn't mean to do it.
In a different way than we are. No, no, just call, he's listening, call back.
Yeah, but the point I'm trying to make is, you've got, you've got somebody in that position of power misleading the, and we've already, and I've already talked about how it's misleading, how these things that she said were not factual about the Community Preservation Act, and then putting it on the ballot, it's just a way to kill momentum. So it's not like, oh, well, you know, it's not non-binding, whatever. No, she's trying to build momentum.
508-996-0500, um, we're gonna, um.
There you go.
There we go. So I'll tell you what we're gonna do, I see you folks on hold, we do have to take a very quick break.
Yeah.
We'll be right back. If you're on hold, if you just call back, I appreciate it. We'll be right with you, and if Marcus hangs up, call back again.
Yeah.
All right, stick around, we can take a quick break, we'll be right back. You're listening to South Coast tonight with Marcus and Chris.
1420 WBSM can now be heard on 99.5 FM. WBSM isn't just a broadcast, it's also a podcast. Get all of our podcasts at WBSM.com, the WBSM app, or just search WBSM on your favorite podcast provider.
All right, welcome back to South Coast Net, I'm Chris McCarthy, and Marcus Farrows here as always, holding down the fort. We're gonna go right back to the phones, I believe we have our caller who called back.
Hey.
Yeah, I'm one of the voices in the night, and I'm back.
Sorry.
Thank you so much.
I'm one of the voices too.
Thank you. So continue with your point, please.
Okay, well, again, uh, I, I go back to, you know, Mayor Lang mentioning also as well that, you know, he feels that there's a, try and with this, I guess, rent stabilization thing, an effort to try to gentrify the city. Uh, I don't hear too many people talk about that. And if they do gentrify the city, it means that a lot of the people that are in the city right now, I don't know where they're gonna go. Uh, so he seems to understand that and brings that up as well.
Yeah.
So again, uh, Mr. Burgos, Counselor Burgos, I think, uh, has all the right intentions.
Sure.
But basically, Counselor Burgos against John Mitchell is like David against Goliath, and John Mitchell is Goliath. Now, you guys both know.
Well, David won.
I know my Bible, so I think he's more David, really.
Challenge of John Mitchell is Scott Lang. Whether or not he wants to do it or not, I realize he's got a business to run and all that sort of stuff. But there are two opposing views about what the city should be like. I know you respect both men.
Sure.
Uh, uh, I don't, I don't know, Marcus, if you were showing a little partiality when you said the former and future, uh, future mayor of the city of New Bedford, but nonetheless.
Marcus knows what he's saying.
I.
Well, he is a litigator.
That would give the voters in New Bedford a true choice as to who they want. I know in the past, when, uh, Mayor Lang, uh, didn't run, uh, Mayor Mitchell was asked about it, if I can remember correctly, he said he didn't run because he knew he wasn't gonna win. Okay? So, you know, uh, that would, there's no one else that's gonna be, uh, Mayor Mitchell. He, he, uh, whether I agree with him or disagree with him, he works hard.
Yes.
And he outworks everybody else, and that's why we're in the, you know, they, they got the situation they do. The other thing that upsets me, put that aside, is, uh, Linda Morad, when she got through talk, and I paid my water bill today, I think it was about $33.
Yeah.
Okay, and she said, oh, by the way, uh, next year, you're gonna see a big increase in your water bill. Well, that's because you guys didn't write a grant.
Right, yeah.
You know, you talk about a dereliction of duty, you, you, I'm sure that if this city, who's ever supposed to start it, whether it be the mayor or the city council, I really don't know, uh, uh, I'm sure the city would've been in good steam to get, you know, uh, some help with this, because we, we're not a rich, uh, city as far as median, uh, salaries and stuff like that, and they drop the ball there, that's what I'm worried more about than all the referendums of the world, you know, that, that are non-binding. So I'll let you guys talk, I'll talk tonight.
Thanks, thanks for the call, appreciate it.
One other thing.
Yeah.
Was Tom Kennedy on this?
He's right, he's coming up next.
I think he's coming up next.
I think he's coming up next.
Oh, good, I hope he is.
All right, all right. So, um, Marcus, the, uh, the, the caller's point is my point, which is that these ballot referendums aren't that significant, that they're not that productive, really. They're non-binding.
Well.
And so anyone who's needs housing right now is gonna, is, is just, just, it's just of cruel hopes.
The question, the questions themselves represent, like Mitchell said, a fundamental change in government, so they can be significant in that they build momentum towards a specific issue. But at the same time, again, if you just throw stuff on the ballot and ask people a bunch of stuff, it does look like you're not doing your job.
Well, 'cause you're not, they're not, they're not doing the job.
Correct.
How do you bring forward, these, these questions, binding or not binding, should've been brought forward months ago in the committee process.
Yeah, I agree.
Because they knew the mayor wasn't gonna agree with them, they just tried to, I don't know what, sneak it forward, it's weird.
I think you can make the case on the, on the rent control question, um, just on the urgency of the housing situation.
Yeah, but this doesn't do anything. So, so when you say urgency.
Yeah.
Marcus, you, you, and I know that you like rent control and rent stabilization, I get it, but, and that, that's fine, it's certainly a legitimate position, it's, you know, um, but there's no urgency.
Yeah, I, I think that.
There's an urgency of people who need housing, but this question doesn't do anything.
You know, here's the thing, I, I think that, um, what would probably be a better course of action is to, if you, if it's a policy you believe in, to start, to start actually cod, trying to codify something.
Start the work, you need a long runway.
And here's the thing, this, this, if you, if you get this passed, if you get it over Mitchell's signature, which you need for a home loan petition, let's say you get all that, um, it's DOA in the House, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean it's not something worth pursuing because you wanna get it on the record.
Right.
But you still gotta do, you still gotta, you still gotta do the thing.
15 months, less than three hours worth of meetings, it's atrocious.
Well, I think, again, I think there's an opportunity, um, to, 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 to lead.
Well, I think, but unfortunately, there's no opportunity to go back in time.
You can only go forward. Exactly, you can only go forward.
Right, the time has been squandered.
Can only go forward.
You know people by their work, you know them by the fruit of their work, that's, that's the truth. So listen, Marcus, I think we have to take a quick break, and we'll be back, we'll go right back to the phones, we see you on hold, 508-996-0500, stick around, we'll be right back. And welcome back to South Coast Net, I'm Chris McCarthy, as always, Marcus Farrows here with me, holding the fort down, um, 508-996-0500, we have someone waiting a long time, we're gonna go right to the phones. Good morning, thanks for holding, good evening, rather.
Good evening, gentlemen, how you doing today?
Hey, Tom.
Well, the, uh, it's the, uh, to override the veto, it's two-thirds of the electorate body, which would be eight votes.
Okay, so it's not two-thirds of the people that are there at the time?
Correct.
Correct.
Eight, eight votes are required.
It's good to know.
That's why it's great to have Tom in the audience and a participant.
Yeah.
The, the other one is, uh, I gotta believe that, that this whole thing with the CPA thing, uh, the Counselor Morad is positioning herself or run from there. I, I gotta believe also, when this thing first came out, there was a, a provision in there allowing for a borrowing, uh, from that particular entity, uh, up to a certain capped number, uh, and maybe that hasn't happened yet, and maybe she got wind that that is going to happen, and she would utilize that down the road. Um, the other conversations, uh, people have to understand, uh, Massachusetts senator is a lot different than a, a mayor, uh, there's going to be friction naturally, uh, and I, I, I think both Senator Montigny and, uh, Mayor Mitchell get along just fine, I don't think there's any animosity there.
Right.
Whatsoever, and there's no sense trying to create it, and if we listen to both, both, uh, people, that.
There's some sense, it'd be good for our program.
I don't wanna choose sides.
I noticed that with you guys.
It's always about what's good for the show, everything else is secondary.
Everything is secondary.
The show is master to everything in my life right now.
Yeah, what I really enjoyed though, was Senator Montigny, uh, regarding the, the mass development issue, you know, and him talking about the legislation that he wrote regarding it, and there was a certain, uh, uh, I don't know, absolute professional, let's not get out of the track here, we're all in this together, you know, here it is, he did that, we did this, and he was trying to bring people together just, just by his conversation, I, I thought that was a wonderful thing.
That's the nature of being a legislator, right? I mean, you've got, you gotta build coalitions, even with people you disagree with on, 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 on a different issue, you've gotta, people everywhere together.
Yeah, it was terrific, and, and, uh, even, even the, the other representatives regarding this issue, they, they, they were professional all the way down.
Yeah.
Maybe not so much the, the guy, uh, in, uh, some shots of the, the transportation, I forget his name already.
Bill Stross?
Who?
Stross.
Stross, yeah. He, he was a little bit, uh, uh, crass, I guess, with his response, but, uh, I mean, the idea here is we're all in this together, uh, uh, I think the mayor has the, uh, the, the city, uh, uh, in goodwill and is trying to do what he can do with what he's got. I think he's been a good mayor, I, I, I think he deserves another four years, uh, I think that's worked out well. Um, and you may not agree with him, and that brings me to the final point.
Sure.
You know, in my theological studies, we, we had a, a chance to go over what happens in a synagogue, and in a synagogue, you know, it, it's designed so that there's people on one side and people on the other, and if you had an issue, you'd go in there and talk about it, it's central, uh, to the Jewish faith, and, but you gotta be prepared, you know, even when Jesus walked into the synagogue, he was prepared, and what's happened, uh, in this scenario, the mayor shamed the city council because they weren't prepared.
Right.
And now they're all up in arms about it, it's crazy. Have the argument, have the discussion, have the debate in the council, that's central to our city, and these are our city fathers, and I haven't seen any of that, it's, it's stunning to me.
Well, Tom.
It's little quips and stuff like that.
If they had work to point to, they would point to it, but unfortunately, for whatever reason, they're not doing committee work the way you guys did when you were on the council, they're just not, and if they were, there would be a record of it. So as a member of the journalism community, when I go to look for past records and they don't exist, or if they exist, they're very miniscule, that point, that, that says to me, you're not doing the work. I mean, this is politics, you've gotta build a record, just because you did the work, but you didn't get a record for it, I mean, and that's really, really irresponsible, to say that, well, I did it, but there's no record of it, I mean, I mean, what the hell are they talking about? It's ridiculous.
That's bad. I know when I first, I mean, in the first week, I was fortunate, uh, my uncle Eddie Wilbs was, uh, chief of staff for Mayor Mackey, and he pulled me aside, he said, look, you get ahold of that charter, and you read that, and you understand that everything goes through the mayor's office. You have your position, say whatever you want, Tommy, but do the work. And I was like, wow, and I did that. And then, when I got done the work, you know, I got pointed to the city solicitors' office, this is a simple thing on, on sheriff's regulations, but it was a lot of work, you know, you're talking months, and then it had to be cleared there. Now, the mayor wouldn't stop that, but he saw the work, and it got passed, and I think those regulations are still in effect today up until the time they get rid of the sheriff's committee, but, uh, it's, it's process, and it is work, and, and, and you have to be interested in it, in, in the sense of not these little flippant things that come out.
Anybody can make a wise crack, anybody.
Yeah.
I mean, it takes hours in these committee meetings.
Take a look, pay, pay attention to bumper stickers, I saw one today.
What's that?
White letters, red stripes, with it said, vote the slate. Ooh, something's brewing.
You think here?
I think here, this is in New Bedford, something's brewing, so that was interesting to me.
I love that observation.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, all right, man.
Hey, thanks, my friend, have a good night.
Yep, God bless.
Marcus, we'll take a quick break.
Do we have any left? Does it say spot block?
It does.
No, we don't have any left.
Wow, we burned through all the commercials already.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we, we don't have any left.
I thought, I thought that Tom had just perfect timing.
No.
No, he needs better timing.
We used three, we had three, we had three breaks, so.
508-996-0500, so, again, I know I keep pointing to this, but I guess it's because, when I was in local government, I know we did a lot of work, and I, I respect people who are in elected office, and I know how much work it takes to move something forward. So if you're not doing the work, and you just come to the end of the line, and you're looking for something to do, something to make it look like you did work, so you come with a ballot question, they're both, they're all provocative questions, but Marcus, through the CPA, because you and I agree on this one, the CPA has been coming up year after year for city council approval. There's nothing on the record that they appro, that they disapproved of any project, even resisted them.
Yeah, no.
Even asked questions.
There's nothing to, to very little.
And now they say, bless the public to rip the question out, it's obnoxious.
This is the most egregious part, they didn't say anything, one counselor said it, and they just blithely.
They voted with him.
Yeah, they just, very casually, just said, no, yeah, well, you got a phone call? Okay, well, let's, uh, let's vote, it's, it's.
So, 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 and now they're saying.
It is, that's obnoxious.
Now they're saying, we don't like the mayor's response, how about the way you treated the mayor?
Yeah.
You didn't talk to him about it, you had no committee meeting, you just threw it on the ballot.
I know, I talked to a former counselor about this, uh, by the, and, and they said, they actually, when the CPA was going on, went door to door and, and, and knocked doors for, for it with, with friends of theirs, like, there was a legitimate campaign for that, and there, these, and the, these counselors that voted with, uh, the council president